I call the meeting of the Stanley County Commissioners, January 7th, meeting to order. I'd like to welcome you all here this evening. And I would like to invite Commissioner Allman to the invocation and pledge.
Let's pray. Father God, thank you for allowing us the freedoms to come here, Lord, and to govern, Lord. And I just pray that you just give us the ability, Lord, give us a clear mind, Lord, and a clear heart to do your will and to do a good job today, Lord. And I just ask that you give us all wisdom, Lord, lift up the commissioners in our community. And, Lord, I just lift up Stanley County as a whole, and I pray that it will be done in our community. I pray in Jesus' name, amen.
I plead the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It is a republic, it is a state, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Allman. I'd like to ask for approval or any adjustments to the agenda this evening.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Morgan.
I'd like to make one addition, add number 13 for the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Legislative Goal Request Resolution.
There's a motion to add the North Carolina Association County Commissioner Legislative Goals Discussion as item number 13 to our agenda tonight. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Jordan. Is there any other discussion on that? All those in favor, please say aye. Motion carries. Agenda item one tonight is a retirement award presentation for Ms. Kim Faulkner. You want to come on up? We're going to talk about you. Kim began working for local government in 1986 while living in Aberdeen, North Carolina, where she worked for the Moore County Health Department's WIC office. In 1988, she returned to Stanley County and began working with the Stanley County Health Department as the child health clerk, and later as the maternal health clerk. After eight years with the Health Department, she transferred to SCUSA in January of 1998. Kim has enjoyed serving the citizens of the county and considered it a privilege to help them understand and obtain services available to them. Through the years, she has also served on the county's United Way and Relay for Life committees with many other county employees outside of her department, and feels truly blessed to have worked with them. In her spare time, Kim enjoys paper crafts such as card making and scrapbooking, making wreaths and flower gardening. She also enjoys spending time with family, including her husband Butch of almost 40 years, son Kyle and his wife, Meridia, and son Ian and girlfriend, Summer. In retirement, she plans to stay active and connected to the community by working part-time, volunteering at her church and hospice, and enjoying her first grandchild, which is due in June. Thank you, Kim. Commissioners, if you would join me at the table down front, we'll make a retirement presentation. All right. Can everybody hear me? All right. Kim, we have a presentation. It says, "Presented to Kim Faulkner for faithful and dedicated service to the citizens of Stanley County on this occasion of your retirement. We extend our sincere appreciation for your service and wish you even greater achievement and rewards in the future. Presented this seventh day of January 2019 by the Stanley County Board of Commissioners." Congratulations. Item two on tonight's agenda is a presentation by the CVB Board. Mr. Chris Lambert is the presenter. All right. Item number three on tonight's agenda is a presentation by the Health Department Healthy Beginnings Grant. Ms. Patricia Hancock. Thank you.
Good evening. Several of you saw this presentation this past Thursday night, but the Health Department is applying for a grant. It's the Healthy Beginnings Grant. The Healthy Beginnings Grant is North Carolina's Minority Infant Mortality Reduction Program. The goals of the program are to improve the birth outcomes of minority women and their families by decreasing the infant mortality. It is an evidence-based program, and it is funded by a grant that is a three-year program. The program is for free case management for minority women that are of childbearing age and their families, including their partners. It provides support system for the pregnancy through the first two years of the child's life. Families receive one-on-one case management services, and program participants are engaged through educational sessions. It is evidence-based with folic acid consumption education, reproductive health education, breastfeeding, nutrition, and exercise education, baby safety, and child development. The counties that are eligible, and those that are eligible are any public or private nonprofit agency. Those counties that rank in the top 25 for infant mortality rates are among minority populations and counties that have at least a twofold racial disparity ratio. Stanley County's five-year average puts us in the top five for both infant mortality and disparities. The funding for the program, Healthy Beginnings funds 10 to 12 agencies, and their amounts that they can be funded is between $65,000 and $80,000 per year of the grant. The funding period is June 1st of 2019 through May 31st of 2022. The funding for this program is state funds. We feel like we have an excellent chance of being funded because of where we rank with infant mortality and infant disparities. The high-risk status alone means that we get extra points added to our grant application, so that would put us at a higher ranking than some of the other grant proposals. Once we receive notification, additional program planning will occur to ensure that we're ready to implement the grant on June 1st. We will begin to advertise for the position in late February, early March, to ensure that we have adequate time to select a qualified candidate. The program requires that we hire a case manager. For us, that would be a social worker, too. That social worker, too, would need to have a minimum caseload of 40 unduplicated minority pregnant women or women that are between pregnancies. Eligible program participants are minority women who are pregnant and are no more than 60 days out from having their baby. They're required to have a minimum monthly contact with the case manager, and at least half of those are required to be a home visit. Education is a huge component of the program. And as I've already said, it's based on folic acid, breastfeeding, infant safe sleep practices, tobacco cessation, and we also talk to them about depression. There is required trainings for the social worker, too, or the program coordinator. Those would include a breastfeeding peer counselor core training, depression screening training, a training that would be held out of state, which is based from Florida State's Partners for a Healthy Baby, infant safe practices for sleep, and many others that would prepare the coordinator for their job. The program requires that there is a community advisory board. That is required by the grant. They're required to have at least a minimum of quarterly meetings and have at least two participants in the program on that committee. Members must attend at least 75% of the time. We already have talked with members of our community, and we have commitment letters from different agencies in the community that they would be willing to serve on this committee. Community outreach is also a very important part of this program as far as making sure that people are aware that the program is there. The program coordinator must conduct or participate in at least four outreach activities per year. We would also do radio spots, newspaper articles, and participate in health fairs and things like that to make sure that the community was aware. As far as referrals for the program, we would get those from our programs that we currently have and also from area providers. Our WIC program sees a lot of minority women, and we would receive referrals from there. We also have an OB-CM program, which is a care management program, but there are people who need that program that do not qualify. This program would supplement that and be able to serve additional ladies. So what we are requesting, we're requesting $80,000 a year from the grant. The funding will support a new social worker, too, with salary-infringed benefits at no additional county dollars. It would also provide that we would have the office furniture that this position would need, the computer that they would need, and any other things that would be needed as far as setting them up to be ready to go into care management. Additional funding would be used for mileage, for the out-of-state travel that will be required, for other trainings that are required for the program, and also to start a baby bucks program for the participants. And what baby bucks is, is that if you have a program and you're wanting the patients to go to get their prenatal appointments, and you're wanting them to make their contacts, you offer them incentives to do those type things. They would earn baby bucks for everything that they went to, if they went to trainings or educational group sessions, they would get baby bucks for that. If they kept their prenatal appointments, they would get them for those. And we would use, like I said, that additional funding to help build that program and build those incentives. We would also use that for food to provide to them, because we will be having evening classes. The advisory board will also meet either at lunch or during an evening, and we would provide light snacks or a light meal for them for those meetings. So what happens after three years? Because the grant is a three-year cycle. If our program is successful, we would have the additional opportunity to reapply for funding through the state. If we were funded, then we would receive an additional three years in the grant. If we were not funded, the program and position would end unless we were able to find additional funding for it. We would try to first apply for different grants, but if we were not able to get that, then the program would end. We would make sure that when we are, we're offering the position to an applicant, that we tell them that the program is a grant-funded program, and they would be aware from the beginning that if we did not receive additional funding, that the program would end, and that would be the end of their job. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Hancock. Are there any questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question.
Mr. Lawhan.
Ms. Hancock, these are, I guess, federal funds?
It's state funds.
State funds. How many other health departments do you think you'll be competing against?
Any of the health departments or counties that are in the top 25 could apply for those grants, and they fund 10 to 12 of those.
Any other question? I have one. It said that the slide you had that it was requesting funding for $80,000, but then there was a previous slide that said you could be funded by the grant anywhere from $60 and some change to $80,000. What happens if you get funded at 67, but we've budgeted for 80?
If we cannot, we would look first to see if we were able to provide the program in that range. If we could not, then we would not accept the funds.
Thank you. What's the pleasure of the board? A motion from Commissioner Jordan to pursue the Healthy Beginnings Grant. Is there a second? A second from Commissioner Allman. Is there any other discussion? No, proceed to vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hancock. Item number four on tonight's agenda is the Transportation Advisory Board Member Appointments. Presenter is going to be Ms. Candace Moffett.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to come before you tonight and review the vacancies we have on our Transit Advisory Board. For the new members of the board, this is an advisory board that we are required to have as recipient, sub-recipient of our FTA, North Carolina DOT 5311 grant. The advisory board provides counsel for us for expenditures of our grant funding and also helps us plan future routes and evaluate our current routes and operating procedures. With that, we currently have four vacancies on our board. The members are appointed by the Board of Commissioners, and historically, the sitting advisory board makes recommendations for the Boards of Commissioners' consideration. And currently, of those four vacancies, we have two recommendations to bring for you this evening. One is Mr. Gary Lewis of the Minority Health Alliance, and the other is Mr. Caesar Correa with City of Locust. Both of these would be reappointments. We also ask for your consideration or recommendation for representatives from the South Stanley area. And when the Rocky River Rural Planning Organization staff position is filled, we will come back to you at a later date to hopefully appoint that staff member to this committee. I'll take, any questions or...
Thank you, Ms. Moffett. Does anybody at the board have questions for Ms. Moffett?
Just, South Stanley, we don't have anyone that's willing to serve at this time.
We had a member, Mr. John Mullis, who is currently on staff with the town of Norwood. Because we meet midday, it was very difficult for him to make midday meetings. So he asked if the Board of Commissioners would consider appointing someone else. He didn't feel that he could be an active member. We have passively, you know, put feelers out there, but we were reluctant to say, why don't you come join us, since this is a Board of Commissioner recommendation and appointment.
I may have you retiree recommendation at the next meeting.
Great.
South Stanley, Norwood.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lawhan. Any other questions? What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we appoint Mr. Gary Lewis and Mr. Caesar Carrera.
We have a motion from Commissioner Lawhan and a second from Vice Chairman Morgan to appoint Mr. Gary Lewis and Mr. Caesar Carrera to the Transit Advisory Board for a two-year term. Is there any other discussion? None, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moffett. Item five on the agenda tonight is the Planning Board Appointments. Mr. Michael Sandy is going to be the presenter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board of Commissioners, a request before you tonight is to replace some members. Planning Board is consisted as a seven-member board. One member is ineligible to be reappointed to a third term, and two members to three-year terms ending February of 2021. We have requested that the following be appointed: Candace Brassinger of 52 South in Norwood, the end in 2021; Joel Malden of Stony Gap Road, ending also in '21; and to reappoint Kevin Brickman, who lives in the Red Cross area on 2427, the end also in '21. Be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Sandy. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Sandy? None, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Morgan.
I'd like to nominate for the positions David Underwood, Michael Williams, and Scott Effer.
I got Scott.
Michael Williams.
Are there any other nominations? Is there a motion to close nominations? Motion to close nominations, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Farr. All those in favor of closing the nominations, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. All right, there's a motion on the board. No, there's not, sorry. Can we have a motion to approve David Underwood, Scott Effer, and Michael Williams for the three seats that are vacant on the Stanley County Planning Board? Motion by Commissioner Barbie, is there a second? Second by Vice Chairman Effer. Is there any discussion? Morgan, sorry. I was reading. Mr. Morgan, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Did he say no? Motion carries seven to zero.
Board of Adjustment, this is a nine-member board. We have seven regular members and two alternates. Two regular members are eligible to be reappointed to a three-year term, the end in June of '21. One alternate member to become a regular member for the three-year term ended in June of '21. The new alternate member to fill the unexpired term, which ends in June of '19. It's requested that we have Billy Franklin Lee of Mount Zion to be appointed, Cynthia Fish of Coal Road, David Doolin, who would be moving up as an alternate to a full regular member, and Brenda Farmer Farcon Road to be in in June of '19. Be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Sandy. Are there any questions? No, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chairman Morgan. I move to appoint Cynthia Fish, David Doolin, and Brenda Farmer as regular members, and Billy Lee as the alternate.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor from Commissioner Morgan to nominate Cynthia Fish, David Doolin, and Brenda Farmer for terms expiring 2021. And Billy Franklin Lee to a term that ends, as an alternate member, to a term that ends in June of 2019? Is that correct? All right, is there a second to that? Second by Commissioner Farr. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I guess just one clarification. Sandy, Mr. Franklin's currently on Advisory Board? He currently on Franklin?
No, he's not. He's rotating off.
He's rotating off.
Of the planning board. He wants to be back on the Board of Adjustment.
And what you stated was, I guess, what's in print. Mr. Lee, Cynthia Fish, and David Doolin be the regular members with Brenda Farmer as the alternate. Am I correct in saying that? Yeah, that's what you stated.
That's what I stated, but that wasn't what the motion was.
I guess my only concern is Brenda Farmer available to attend those meetings?
She says, well, we interview when people do their application that we have them to submit, which we hired for board membership, is to tell them when we meet, what time, and how often, and they understand what the obligation would entail if they're appointed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawhan. Any other questions? All right. A motion in a second to approve Cynthia Fish, David Doolin, and Brenda Farmer as regular members, and Billy Franklin Lee as an alternate member. All those opposed, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Item number seven on the agenda is the Central Atlanta Cog Region F Aging Advisory Board. Presenter is going to be County Manager Lucas.
Thank you, members of the board. This is for Central Atlanta Council of Governments, Region F. Currently have two vacancies, one delegate position for a two-year term, one alternate position for a one-year term. We've included the attendance records in your packet. Currently, there are no volunteer applications on file for this committee. So really, one of the reasons we were putting this in front of you is just to sort of let you know that we have these opportunities. If you have somebody that you know of that's interested, you know, the meetings are in Charlotte, and so it does, that does require that, you know, the person's willing to drive over there and pretend and anticipate those meetings. I'll be happy to answer any questions of anyone. There is currently two vacancies, one for the delegate position and one for the alternate.
Any questions for County Manager Lucas?
County Manager, how long since we've had someone on that board?
We have folks on the board. We just have a vacancy.
So there are four seats, two are vacant.
So we have, we have, we have representation. We have representation. We just don't have the full representation, because we have vacancies. It'd be two, so one delegate, one full-time delegate, and then one alternate. She's on there, so we have three that are currently on there, so you got one more delegate. That's correct. And then an alternate.
Any other questions? I think this was just an informational agenda item. There's no other questions. We'll move on. Item number eight, Central Atlanta Economic Development Commission Appointment. Presenter, County Manager Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Another item from Central Atlanta Council of Governments. This is for their Central Atlanta Economic Development Commission. They're asking and recommending that a private sector individual fill the role on this board. We, I am actually a member of that board and attend those meetings and/or our EDC director when we have one. And so they're just looking for a private sector representative. It's typically someone from a league of a chamber or an institution of post-secondary education or business representative that can represent business and local interests. They meet quarterly, and then those meetings normally begin at 4:00 p.m. And you do have the opportunity to call in, because again, those meetings are in Charlotte. So partly was to get this in front of you in case you knew of anyone that you'd be interested in appointing that represents business and industry, post-secondary education, or some other business interest. We can certainly take action on this at a future meeting if there is no one that anyone wants to make a motion for this evening. We can certainly take action on this at a future meeting if there is no one that anyone wants to make a motion for this evening.
Any questions?
A comment or Mr. Lucas?
Yes, sir.
Eddie Schimpok, who is was a self-employed business owner, also a chairman of the chamber. You don't mind, Commissioners don't mind, I'm gonna contact Eddie and say he'd be interested. Think he'd make a good one.
I wouldn't disagree with him.
I don't think there's any objection contacting him and getting him to fill out an application and bring it back to the next meeting. Any other questions? Alright, item nine is a resolution supporting local control of the school calendar. Presenter, County Manager Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board. The School Board of Education, Board of Education for Stanley County approved a resolution, similar resolution requesting that the Boards of Education be given more flexibility with local school calendars, and they've asked us to consider a resolution as well, supporting that at the General Assembly, so that they can hopefully get some changes made to their school calendar and allow them more flexibility. Because obviously, as you know, things are different in all one hundred counties. So I think there's want to have the ability in each of those counties to be able to make a calendar based on the needs of that community, so. It's here for your consideration this evening. We have to answer any questions.
Thank you, County Manager. I'd like to speak just a second on this. I know I spoke with Dr. James, the school superintendent, after they passed the resolution with them. We talked about maybe us doing one just to show the General Assembly that we're supportive of that action. I know I personally am supportive of that action. And you can't, you can see it very obviously if you're in a school system right now, and I'll speak just from personal experience. If you've got a student that wants to take a class at the community college, those classes started today, but their high school classes from first semester are still ongoing and preventing them from attending. So they're missing two weeks of college classes right now for this week and next week, which are exams, which is detrimental to a college education to miss two weeks of class. So that's why I plan to support this resolution. But any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adopt the resolution supporting local control of school calendars.
Thank you. We have a motion from Commissioner Almond. And a second from Commissioner Jordan. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Item ten on tonight's agenda is the Board's Annual Strategic Planning Retreat. Commissioner, I'm sorry, County Manager Lucas presenting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board. For the last ten years, the Board's held a strategic planning retreat. And we say retreat, but it's really a local event that happens out at, we've been holding it out at the airport for the last several years, and the space works well. Staff's recommending that retreat be held again. I think it gives the Board an opportunity to have some real candid discussion in a little bit less formal setting than a board meeting. It's been very helpful to help set priorities as it relates to capital projects, budget. It allows us to present some things that take a little more time to talk about don't really, aren't necessarily, it's not easily to come to you and spend thirty minutes talking about a topic here because you have such a large agenda, so. We would recommend the planning retreat. I put some dates out here. Certainly would like to have a facilitator. I think the facilitator is valuable because it keeps staff out of the staff's able to participate, but we're not in the facilitation role. We facilitated, we've done it before, we can do it again if we need to, but I think having the, I think there's some advantages to having a facilitator at the event, so. I put four dates out there for you. The facilitator that we've used in the past is available, these four dates, so I know that we can, we can, we at least have that option, so. Would ask the Board for consideration, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lucas. Are there any questions for County Manager?
No questions in terms of comments we discussed earlier. I'm assuming you're gonna wanna pick a date. You of us had tentatively said the eighth worked well for some of us. Wanna just pick one as a launching platform and decide what they'd vote on. I'd like to posit that one.
I'll be in Robeson County on the eighth. That's the only day I can't do. That's the eighth's the only day I can't do. February or March eighth, either one I can't. February eighth I cannot be at. The other three dates I am available.
February fifteenth.
Everybody good with fifteen? Mr. Lucas, if you'll try and schedule that. Now we need to discuss the facilitator. I know in years past that I've been involved, the facilitator has been an integral part because it does allow the county staff to participate more in the discussion rather than try and lead the discussion and guide us. It helps bring out more ideas, in my opinion, that we may miss otherwise just by staying in our own little box, but that's just my opinion. What's the pleasure of the board? Do we have a cost on that?
Easily run somewhere between fifteen hundred and two thousand dollars, and we budget it for it.
Okay. So it's money that's already in the budget for the potential use of a facilitator. What's the pleasure of the board?
They work with staff on the front end to design the day, the agenda. Certainly, we take the Board's feedback. There's certain things that staff wants to accomplish at that at that retreat in terms of getting guidance on budget, prioritizing capital projects. This year, we're gonna, since the Board is really, there's quite a bit of turnover on the Board, we wanna set a new mission and some guiding principles and some long-term goals for the Board. We wanna have that discussion, but the rest of the day really is feedback from the Commissioners, things they wanna talk about, wanna put on there. So we take that information and work with the facilitator to sort of design the day and design how we're gonna approach the different action items in terms of how much facilitation needs to be there, what items are action items and need a boat, and so how do we wanna do that? And, you know, sometimes it's a multi-stage voting process, and so where Board members have to rank and prioritize and work through that, so. And then, and obviously, that person also keeps us on task, making sure that we're not spending forty-five minutes on an item that really should take fifteen, and that's what we had on the agenda for fifteen, and then all of a sudden, you know, you're pushing out and you're not getting everything done that's on your agenda, so it really is a sort of a taskmaster.
Any other questions?
This is more of a comment, but I agree with Commissioner. We should have the facilitator. I think it's worked well the last two years that we've done it.
As long as everyone's in consensus, I'm fine. As long as I know we're good, I just don't wanna have it, hold the facilitator there and then have folks be like, why do we do this? And what are we paying for?
Chairman, I made the motion we hire a facilitator.
Alright, there's a motion from Commissioner Jordan to hire a facilitator for the retreat. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Morgan. Any other discussion? Yes, sir.
I was planning to. I think she does a good job, and I think the Board's had good rapport with her, and I think she just gets along well with folks in the first group, so. She was, I reached out to her to make sure these dates would be available to her, and they were, so.
Any other discussion? Yes, sir.
The price that you got quoted in here in the budget, is that pretty much standard pricing for all coordinators and facilitators?
Yeah, if you, I mean, obviously, you can get it done for cheaper, but I think it's a matter of you get what you pay for. I think if you, the folks that I've talked to, that I've looked around and priced similar type of scope of services, yes. In fact, I would dare say that we're probably, we're getting good value, but they're higher priced as well. But yeah, you can always get someone cheaper, but again, I always go by the adage, you get what you pay for. If you're just looking for someone to keep you on time, you can pay five hundred. Works well with folks and helps facilitate that and helps work with staff to develop the agenda, has a real game plan going in of how you're gonna address each item, I think you're at a different level of involvement from the facilitator.
Any other questions or discussion? Alright, the motion is to approve a facilitator. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero.
We'll just recess that day with that, at the February, I guess the first February meeting or second February meeting, whatever days, we'll just recess that meeting. So you can read adjourn on the, usually we do it from nine to four, so.
Item number eleven is the Budget Calendar for two thousand nineteen twenty. County Manager Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board. This really is actually the sort of the kickoff for the nineteen twenty budget. Is, we set the calendar. Finance has already started working on numbers behind the scenes, and certainly I've been working on some other items in terms of capital and getting ready for the Board Retreat, but wanna put the calendar in front of you. The one thing I do always highlight in yellow, in some years we have meetings, some years we don't. I think we did actually have some meetings last year with the School Board and with the Board of Trustees, and I think those meetings are valuable. I think it's at least once a year, we should be sitting down with those with those Boards and talking strategically and getting to know their priorities and where they're going, so that helps us work together, so. We'll schedule those in May, March, and April as we get closer, but we don't have definitive dates on those yet, but as we get closer to those months, we'll set some dates based on Board availability, so. With that exception, I would ask the Board to approve the Budget Calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Lucas. Is there any discussion on the calendar presented by the County Manager? Any questions? There's not. What's the pleasure of the board? Motion to approve the Budget Calendar by Commissioner Lohan, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Farr. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Item number twelve is the Consent Agenda this evening. What's the pleasure of the board?
A move to approve as presented?
Motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Almond. Any other discussion on that? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Item number thirteen on the agenda tonight was added. That's the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Legislative Goal. I believe this is an addition to the goals that came out in that work session email from the Association. This is one that we present to them. Let the County Manager speak on it.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board. As you all received that information about what their goals were going to be or what they had done through their work sessions, and as I was going through that, I had sent Commissioner Morgan and, or Vice Chairman Morgan, an email a couple of weeks ago, knowing that he was gonna be our representative there, stating that I didn't see anything that really spoke to additional funding for water and sewer grants and/or zero-interest loans that we count on, so that are critical to what we do here locally with infrastructure. And so I said, you know, may wanna consider bringing that up and seeing if we can add this, and so when Vice Chairman Morgan and I were talking late last week, he said, it would be great if I had a resolution from the Board so that I had something in writing, kind of formal, to take there, and there's a process up there by which you can get things considered for additional items added, so. He will be able to present this and get it in their process to hopefully get them to consider adding it, so. Be happy to answer any questions. I think it's, I think it's good that we've got representation there and that we at least are potentially gonna get this added as a goal.
Thank you, Mr. Lucas. Vice Chairman Morgan, you have, I know you're our delegate.
I was just gonna say that I did look it up, and we do have, there is actual scheduled meeting time for adding items such as this to be presented, and then they'll narrow it down, so to have this as a resolution from the whole Board backing will look better, obviously, presented.
Are there any questions? What's the pleasure of the board? Motion to adopt the resolution by Commissioner Barbie, is there a second? Second from Vice Chairman Morgan. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Alright, I think I think our presenter for item number two, Mr. Chris Lambert. We'll go back to item number two in the agenda book.
How's everybody? Sorry I was late. I apologize about that. Again, my name is Chris Lambert. I'm the Director of the Convention and Visitors Bureau for Stanley County. Basically, this is my yearly just presentation to let you know what we've been up to, things that we've accomplished. The first thing I wanted to discuss was the Major League Fishing Tournament that we partnered with, you guys on. We also partnered with the City of Albemarle and three other counties. That in itself brought in seven hundred room nights, a great economic impact, and the publicity that we got from that was phenomenal. To have forty-eight of the nation's top anglers in Stanley County enjoying our lakes, enjoying our area, was truly a good thing for Stanley County. I think it's gonna air in May. We have a viewing party scheduled for, don't have the exact date yet, but it will be at East Coast Wings. We're trying to get everybody. It'll be two to four. Unfortunately, I think it's on Mother's Day weekend, so. That's, we tried to get an early viewing. They did not allow that. It breaches their contract. So that's one thing that we did. Don't wanna, we can honestly stay up here and just tell you every single event, but y'all would get mad at me even though I was late. The other thing, we've given some donations away this year. One tomorrow, Mountain State Park. Basically, they didn't have kayaks before we offered this donation. Now you can go to Mar mountain State Park, rent kayaks. They also have a shade structure at their pool, which you know, living in the summer here, you have to have a shade structure. And we're also looking for a natural playground that will be at Mar Mountain State Park. Some of the ways that we do things as far as publicity, our website, visit stanley.com, you see it on there, on your background here. That has been a godsend to us along with social media, so. Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, those things have been putting us on an even playing field with larger communities, larger counties, and things are going very well with that. Currently, as far as funds coming in, we've borrowed in about an eighty-one million dollar economic impact for two thousand seventeen that equals out to about a hundred and fifteen dollar tax saving to each county resident. So money has continued to go up, and we've continued to push forward, and everything's so far been going well. I think you all have a travel guide that's in front of you or an adventure guide. That is two years old. We do that every two years just to make sure that we stay on top of it. We did take out the restaurant guide in that because sometimes restaurants come in, sometimes they go out. Wanted to make sure that everything was shelf-ready if it needed to be. So on our website, you'll be able to find all the restaurants in Stanley County, and our travel guide, you'll find all the amenities in Stanley County. So again, I didn't hit on every single one of our tourist attractions, but we do have quite a few. Four vineyards in Stanley County bring in a ton of people. Mar Mountain State Park, over five hundred thousand people, and both of our lakes. Don't really have figures on the lakes right now, but honestly, the amount of people that use those lakes, Baden and Tillery and Falls Reservoir is a huge number, so. Again, I apologize I was late, but if anybody has any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Does anybody have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question. I know you have a board, Chris.
Yes, sir.
Can you tell us, is, I guess, who are the members of the Board? And are they, uh, located throughout the county or?
Yes, sir, we have one member from each municipality. We have two from the county and two from the City of Albemarle. So right now, we have, currently, we have a great Board. Um, would you like me to list all of them? Okay, if I miss out anybody, I apologize. Baden, we'll start with Albemarle. Albemarle, you have Ms. Martha Hughes and Mr. Dexter Townsend. Both of those are on the City Council. Red Cross, we have Ms. Aloma Whitley, who also works for the town. Stanfield, we have Ms. Bridget Helms, who is the Town Manager. Locust, we have Mr. Bob Remsberg. Norwood, we have Mr. Jeff Irvin. New London, we have Mr. Brett Spate. What am I forgetting right now? Richfield is Mrs. Kelly Huff. She actually owns Richfield Child Development. Um, Baden, we have Ms. Dolores Chambers. Meisenheimer, Mr. Jeff Watson. And I think that's it, isn't it? And the county has two, which is Ashley Smith and Ms. Doshia Swearingen. Yes, we have three-year staggered terms. So we have new faces that come on the, each municipality has a way, um, every three years, they're contacted, either continue to keep that same person, or they can appoint a new person, just depending on them. Oakboro currently does not have a representative as of right now. It was Mr. Daniel Smith. I think he took another job and just is no longer on the Board.
Any other questions for Mr. Lambert? Thank you.
Again, I apologize, but thank you guys.
All right, if the Board would allow me just to, uh, kind of a point of personal privilege, I'd like to invite Mr. Reed Thornburg. He wanted to do a special presentation, uh, for Mr. Crisco tonight.
Kinda caught the good sheriff off guard today, but...
That's fine.
Chairman Swaim, Commissioners, uh, County Leaders. Uh, January 9th this week is Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, and throughout our 20 counties that Cardinal Innovations Healthcare serves for meeting the needs of individuals seeking behavioral health care. I wanna say a special appreciation for Sheriff Crisco for his service, not only to the county, but also, uh, his former service at, with the Police Department there in Oakboro. And I know his commitment, uh, and, and the men and women that serve under him to, uh, make a positive impact in the community when it comes to working and, and serving individuals with behavioral health needs. Uh, oftentimes, those individuals are either overlooked or, uh, have a stigma attached, uh, to their diagnosis, or, uh, maybe even, uh, some of the behaviors that they exhibit that at times, uh, challenge law enforcement to use discretion and, and make decisions regarding, uh, whether or not to, uh, work with those individuals, uh, through advocacy or by other means, enforce the law. So, uh, on behalf of Cardinal Innovations, I just wanna say thank you, uh, to Sheriff Crisco and, and what he means to our agency, and then also to, uh, citizens in the community with behavioral health needs. So, thank you very much. As a small token of our appreciation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thornburg, and thank you Sheriff Crisco for being here tonight. That brings us to public comment. We didn't have anybody signed up. Um, is anybody, I see Mr. Poole. I would like to take a moment to remind everybody to keep comments to three minutes or less. County Manager will help remind you.
Well aware of the three-minute rule, thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman and, uh, Board. Uh, I wanna personally thank you for, for passing the resolution tonight. Just to give you a little quick background, this has sort of been a political football issue across the state for a lot of years, and the eastern part of the state, which is heavy into, uh, tourism and that type thing, uh, has pretty much mandated how the calendar's been set, because it affects them. They wanna get all that la- late summer traffic into the beach, and they don't want you going to school too early. Uh, and it doesn't work well for a lot of the other part of the state, but that's what's been going on for years. Don't know that we're gonna accomplish it this time, but there has been a lot of pressure and, and, and building to, to, to break through this barrier and maybe get it where local schools can, can set up their own calendar. Another advantage in addition to the one the Chairman mentioned, it, it could allow your, uh, teachers to finish a semester's work and have exams prior to Christmas. Instead of having a lag time, kids go home. I didn't study in high school during Christmas, I doubt any of you did. But, uh, you, they come back after Christmas, they forgot a lot, so it, it's, it can be an advantage all the way around, and I'd like to thank you for that. The second thing, I haven't publicly come before your Board to thank you, excuse me, for, uh, your support in, uh, the sales tax that passed recently. And I'd like to, I know some of you weren't on board at that time, but I, those of you that weren't, I felt, feel like you were supportive of that, uh, issue too. And I wanna personally, I, I did thank you at our meeting publicly, but I'd, I wanted to come before your Board and personally thank you for that too. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairman Poole. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll go to Board comments. Uh, we'll start with Commissioner Lohan tonight.
The, uh, home building in Stanley County, I, uh, wanna share some numbers with you about that. December permits for new homes were 18, 3.39 million dollars. Average value of the home was 188,595 dollars, which is up, uh, quite a bit from previous years. December 17, we issued 26 permits, so our 18 numbers are down. But January through December, we issued 265 new home permits, which is up 3.5% from 2017, which is a good indicator that our economy is good in Stanley County. Total value of homes being built is 48 million, 48.18 million dollars in value, which is up 19% from 2017. A very good new home building permit issued really during the last two or three years. So our economy continues to be strong. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lohan. Commissioner Jordan? Thank you. Commissioner Barbie? Thank you. Commissioner Fur? Mr. Alman? Mr. Morgan? I have no comment tonight either. County staff, I'll do it as a whole. They told me I couldn't call them out individually anymore. County staff? No. Okay. We need a motion to, uh, go into closed session to discuss, to discuss a personnel issue in accordance with General Statute 143-318.11A6, an economic development issue in accordance with General Statute 143-318.11A4, and a real estate transaction in accordance with General Statute 143-318.11A5. I have a motion. Motion by Commissioner Jordan, is there a second? Second by Vice Chairman Morgan. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no.
I'd like to, uh, make a motion that we approve the maximum merit pay, um, of $1,000 for County Manager.
There's a motion to approve merit pay of $1,000 for the County Manager, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Alman. Is there any discussion on that? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Any other business? Motion to adjourn by Commissioner Morgan, is there, or Commissioner Jordan, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Lohan. And all those in favor, aye.